Oh, now look at all the deals that come up.
It just might, my sound is on, so videos pop open.
Rich just got pushed off the main page. Oh, he came back. Be nice if they could get us all, the councilors all together on one page, right?
Okay, I have 5:30 PM. Can everybody hear me okay? Thumbs up, nods of the heads. Thank you very much. Welcome everyone to the September 27th, 2021 City Council meeting. And I'd like to at this point, have the city clerk call the roll.
I'm the only one. Yeah, there's some older guy and me. Oh, maybe there's more pages, yes.
If I could ask everyone to please mute yourself except for the city clerk who should be calling the roll about now. Is she? Is she there? I would call the roll myself, except we need her to take the minutes of the meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I can go check very quickly, just a moment.
Thank you.
I'm not sure why it's not working for me in there, so I'm just gonna take roll from here. Counsel McGlaughlin.
President.
Counsel Runyon.
President.
Counsel Randall.
President.
Counsel Curtis.
Present.
Bill O'Connell, I'm Chris. Counsel Richardson.
President.
And Mayor Mays.
Present.
Thank you. Sorry.
Item three on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance. I'd like to ask Counselor Scott Randall, please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, just as for the justice for all.
Thank you, Counsel Randall. Item four is approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Long. I'll move approval of the agenda as presented.
And McGlaughlin will second.
Thank you. Counselor Long and McGlaughlin has been moved by Counselor Long and seconded by Counselor McGlaughlin to approve the amendment as presented. Approve the agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Item five is presentations and proclamations. Tonight, we have a special presentation from the Northwest Natural Gas Company, who's gonna be updating us on the low-carbon pathway. At this point, I'd like to call on Tanya Brumley, representing Northwest Natural, to take it from here. Hello, Ms. Brumley.
Hi, Mayor Mays, and thank you very much. So I'm Tanya Brumley with Northwest Natural. I'm the Regional Community Affairs Manager for the Columbia Gorge. And I am going to introduce you to the two Northwest Natural people who will be presenting today. Mary Morelands is our Director of Environmental Policy and Corporate Responsibility, as well as Catherine Williams, our Vice President of Public Affairs and Sustainability.
Thank you so much for having us here today. And I'm gonna start to share my screen, but I want Catherine to kick us off.
Sure, I'll kick it off. If folks can't hear me, please give me a thumbs down. But I'll just pick off where Tanya left off. Good evening, Mayor Mays and members of council and staff and interested citizens. I wish I were there in person, but we all know, I guess, why I'm not. Mary is going to walk us through the low-carbon pathway work, which she has been leading here at the utility for several years. That low-carbon pathway work really started with a recognition that the role that we play as a utility, particularly in parts of the state like the gorge, where you have multiple days and sometimes weeks of below freezing temperatures, and you really have that gas utility kind of taking over that winter peak load. We're really proud to be the gas utility that serves the gorge and the DOWs. Not all of the gorge, but certainly the DOWs and other parts of the gorge. We recognize, though, that as we were looking towards a lower carbon future, we really needed to start early thinking about how, as a gas utility, we were gonna start to lower our carbon footprint. That journey was started with what was called our low-carbon pathway, and now we've turned that into a vision for 2050 to be carbon neutral. Mary's gonna talk a little bit about that, but I'll be here, and I know you all know Tanya, and she's a great resources, resource located in the DOWs. So we really see this as a partnership with communities that we serve about how we can continue to play the role we've played for many decades in the state of Oregon, and also lower our carbon footprint. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mary, and thanks again for the time on your agenda this evening.
Thank you, Catherine, and thank you, Mayor Mays, and everyone for this time. And we're really excited to share what we're working on, update you, and really answer any questions that might arise. But it's a really exciting time in the energy industry, as, as I'm sure many talk about, you know, how we make sure that we're, we're serving our customers, and we're also being mindful of the future. And so Catherine mentioned, we now have a goal of being carbon neutral by 2050. And so I always like to start off, when I say there's a goal, to explain what that actually means, because it could be a term of art. And that really means that we're working to balance the carbonization actions with, with the remaining emissions. And it's really holistically a way that we can have a, a carbon goal that optimizes the least cost and highest impact solutions, that we can be cognizant of our customers' needs, continue to serve on those coldest days of the year, and still reduce the carbon impact of our, of our operations. That's what carbon neutral really means, so being as smart as we can and, and as resourceful as we can. And it's important also, when you're making a goal, to talk about what your, what your system does today. And so our current system is a real workhorse in the region. We're really proud of, of what we do. We serve 2.5 million people in 140 communities. And that service creates about 6% of the current Oregon greenhouse gas emissions. I know y'all are rather proximate to Washington, where it's about half of a percent, where I have a slightly smaller footprint there, but worth including. And for that, that 6%, we, we do a lot, and we serve customers in those coldest days of the year. We're also balancing with the, the electric grid in the region, you know, as we are delivering to the same customers. And so that 6%, as you see on this bar chart, that's Northwest Natural, our sales customer. So those are customers for whom we purchase gas and deliver gas. There's also an additional 6% that comprises the other gas utilities in the state of Oregon and the transport customers. But the reason I like to show this bar, when we talk about the size of what we do, is to note that we're not just thinking about reducing the carbon footprint of our own system, that 6% shrink, but we're thinking about shrinking the whole bar, because we can leverage our modern system to, to make positive change and, and reduce carbon emissions across the whole economy. And that's what that low-carbon pathway is. We do everything that we do at the company through our shared values of equity, environment, and economy. So how do we serve people affordably and reliably? How do we reduce our impact on the environment? And how do we use our tight, modern system to support economic health, right? How do we do all those things? That's, that's a triple screen for our actions. We wanna leave no one behind. That's all customers. So how do we get to zero? How do we get to carbon neutral by 2050? We want to integrate renewable sources that don't contribute new carbon to the atmosphere. And so we talked about renewable sources. That's renewable natural gas, renewable hydrogen, which we'll talk about a little bit more. It's also partnering with clean electric systems, like the one that serves your region, to create seasonal and peak energy storage. So we have excess hydro, excess wind, excess solar, leveraging the gas system to be a partner in that. And then always, always encouraging unused innovation and deep energy efficiency. Energy efficiency is the most affordable and smartest way that we can reduce load in our region. It serves our customers and our company's goals and our state and regional goals by reducing costs without reducing people's comfort and ability to, to meet their needs. I wanna give a hat tip always. There might be a little bit of an echo. Hopefully, I could be only hearing it, but just in case, if you wanted to go mute, thank you. To, I had 7.9% of our customers who participate in the Smart Energy Program, which is our carbon offset program we offer. So voluntarily, customers step up to spend a little bit more every month in order to reduce the carbon footprint associated with their energy delivery. And they do so in a way that secures high-quality carbon offsets that are, they're in our own region here in the Northwest. So it's investing in our own region's innovation and decarbonization through their gas bills. And the DOWs is at 5.9%, and your neighbors in the Hood River at 7.6. So you are leading the way there. And we're really excited to show, not to make it too competitive, but always nice to show folks who are high scores in Smart Energy, we're very proud of that program. Throughout its time, it's offset about one and a half million metric tons from our customers, and that's, that's a lot. You might have heard in the news recently, there's a lot going on, that there's carbon regulation in our, in our region. And that's something that I really wanna talk about and make sure that you guys get chances to ask questions. How does that fit with our low-carbon goal? Here in Oregon and in Washington, there are carbon regulation programs that are currently in the process of being built and shaped with the rulemaking, the executive order in Oregon, now called the Client Protection Program. And there's a legislative approach in Washington that's more like a conventional cap and trade. What I would love to say, and I mean very much, is that we have directional alignment with the Northwest Natural Carbon Neutrality Goal and the, and these rules. And what that means is, these are not a shock to the system. We're working to find ways to do deep decarbonization through conservation, renewable integration, and other types of innovation. And this is not brand new for Northwest Natural. We've been working on this for, for more than a decade, finding ways that we can innovate. And so carbon regulation is, is challenging, meeting goals is challenging, but it's the right kind of challenge and one that we are, we are ready to face and are working to make sure we do so in the way that is the most effective for our customers. You know, goal achievement is possible, tactics matter. It sounds like a soundbite, but it is one. So we're actively engaged in both states and are advocating for a program design that serves our customers best. And so we can and we will to carbonize this system. And how we achieve the goal is influenced by the rules, and that's why we're very engaged right now. In Oregon, we have a rulemaking process underway with our, our comments due on October 4th. It's quite soon. And input for community members and industry is always really valuable. And all energy systems in our region are decarbonizing. All sectors will see cost impacts. The best outcomes are gonna happen when all solutions are on the table, and we're excited to be one of those solutions. And we embrace the change. And with the electric and gas system working together, we know that we can accomplish our carbon goals. We're committed to this carbon neutral pipeline by 2050. And, you know, I mentioned integrating renewables. It's really visible to see the renewables that are being integrated on the electric side in your region. As you drive through the gorge, it's really easy to see windmills and the dams. What you might not be seeing as much, but what is definitely coming on the horizon is the integration of renewables in the natural gas pipeline delivery system, or the pipeline delivery system, as we work to integrate a different product delivered to our customers. We have been changing as a company, as part of our history, as part of our DNA, because we're a service company, and we evolved to meet the changing needs of the communities that we serve. So we initially started out as a manufactured gas company. That's the difference between natural and manufactured gas, hence the name. And we delivered that for gas lamps in Portland. And then our network expanded with the delivery of conventional gas. We've modernized our system significantly. We operate one of the tightest and most modern systems in the country, and now we're integrating new things onto it. So we have changed a lot, and we continue to look forward to moving towards what our customers and our region needs. Our destination zero, this is one of my favorite images. I used to love a video game called SimCity when I was a kid, and this is the SimCity of what I think the future should look like and will look like. As, as we continue to do this work, we're gonna continue to be committed to really deep energy efficiency, serving commercial and residential heating, as we are well-known for, and serving our industrial load. But we're also going to be leveraging our modern type system to collect waste energy, so that renewable natural gas comes from waste. And, and even thinking of different ways we can leverage our pipeline delivery system. And I am getting a little bit of reverbs there, in case anyone didn't mean to, and might not know they're off mute.
Let me cut in.
Yeah.
541-9801482 phone that, okay, you're muted now, but we'd appreciate it if you'd stay muted. Thank you very much. Please proceed. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Mays. Appreciate it. I'll navigate in a new world. So this, on this image, I just wanna draw your attention to the fact that we're looking at using our system in the way that we have done historically to deliver heat and, you know, process heat, commercially, residential heat to our customers. Also, looking at hydrogen and a blend of renewable gases and renewable hydrogen to meet our end-use customers' needs. And so when we think about the gas system of the future and destination zero, this is what we're thinking of, is doing things differently. When we think about that initial bar you saw, how do we leverage the modern gas system to help to make the econ, whole economy decarbonized? It's, it's a collaborative effort. And I like this line. It's also a bit of a soundbite, but it's a true one. Like, let's create the future we imagine. But I like to end on that. And if anyone has any questions, I realize I've been trying to time myself to keep within our 15-minute timeframe, so talked rather fast. If I have glazed over anything too much, I'd love to speak more about the renewables we hope to integrate on the pipeline, but mostly just wanna express my gratitude for the chance to update you all, because the only way we get the word out about our efforts is to share them. So having time on your agenda is much appreciated tonight.
You're very welcome, and you were well within the 15 minutes. And you didn't talk that fast. You did a really nice job. And at this point, I'd like to ask the city council, has anyone on the city council had any questions? For either of the three representatives from Northwest Natural? Anybody? Or comments?
Or comment.
Yeah, Ms. Counsel Runyon.
Yeah, just to, to say that I'm really glad to hear a presentation and coming forward and, and the things that are on the news all the time, being addressed and so forth. But I would say that Northwest Natural has been a great community partner in the gorge, and I'm glad to have them here, and I'm glad that they're working towards their goals for the future.
Thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, again, thank you all very much for your presentation. It's very, very informative and very worthwhile.
You're very welcome. Thank you again for the time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, item six on the agenda is audience participation. During this portion of the meeting, anyone may speak on any subject, which does not later appear on the agenda. I think there's some, some people here tonight who are interested in the Google Water Agreement. That agreement is on the agenda under item 11, and will be discussed later in this meeting. So if a response by the city is requested by the speaker, the speaker will be referred to the city manager for further action. This issue may appear on a future meeting agenda for city council consideration. Up to five minutes per person will be allowed. Is there anyone on the, in, on, in the audience that would like to address the city council for up to five minutes on any item that is not on the agenda? And I have on my screen here about 40 people, and there's a, there's more than that present. So if I don't see you raise your hand or whatever, just feel free to speak up. Would anybody like to address the city council? Last call. Okay, we'll move on. Thank you very much. Item seven is the city manager report. Ms. Kruger.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Just one item for you tonight. We sent you, excuse me, I sent you a copy of the summary that we received from the city attorney regarding the demolition of the Gettle Building. I would like to go ahead and move, begin to move that forward. It's been about three years since the council moved to demolish that building. So unless there's some change in what that motion directed me to do, you know, we've gone through two years of discussing and meeting with people, and people trying to come up with some ideas that have not been successful. So as I move forward, unless someone says stop, I'll probably start my process with working with the planning department through the Historic Landmarks Commission, because I know we have a lot of documentation that would need to be done. And one question that was brought to my attention was to try to recreate the murals or mural on that building somewhere else. So I would look into that first to do all that due diligence before we actually move forward with anything. So still a long way out, but I truly don't wanna leave this for my successor. I'd like to have it in progress, so someone doesn't have to start all over with this years-long project. That's all I have for you this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to item eight, the city council reports. We'll start with Counselor Long.
Thank you, Mayor Mays. So this month, or since our last meeting, I attended two meetings on behalf of city council. And so I'd like to report out first on the traffic safety meeting, which occurred on September 15th. We had several items come in from the public that looked for attention. One of the things that we're gonna move forward on is a loading zone and a note with no parking signs down in the Lone Pine area. It's actually behind the dialysis clinic. We were, they're having some trouble not being able to get their loading and unloading done just because of people there and those, and that housing complex blocking the driveway. So we've decided to go ahead and, and label that. There were some complaints about people running their fog lights all the time and having tires extending past the, the fenders. We decided that that is not something we want the city police to focus on at this time. But we did wanna kind of get that out there to the public and remind them that both of those things are illegal. And the other two involve blocking of the streets, one at Burgerville and the other one at Chana- Chanawith Elementary. So there was a complaint that the alley behind Burgerville should be two ways. It was being blocked by traffic. Again, we figure, feel with COVID and the response and Burgerville's dining area being closed for safety. That just doesn't really work, but we are looking into ways to facilitate having, not having people back up on to Liberty Street, because it is blocking traffic, and that is illegal. And it's also something that's happening down sometimes by US Bank. And Chanawith Elementary is having the same problem. They have a brand-new principal who didn't get left any instructions. And so between their busing situation, where they pull in, and then all the parents are lined up, waiting for the buses to leave before they can go pick up their kids, it's just been blocking the road north there. And so we're working with the elementary school, and they'll be coming to our next traffic safety meeting to discuss some solutions for that. And since my report on traffic safety was so long, I'm gonna allow someone else to do the report on urban renewal. But I also did participate in that meeting last week. Thank you.
Sounds like you had quite an agenda on traffic safety. Okay, Counsel Runyon.
Nothing to report at this time.
Okay, Counsel Randall.
Thank you, Mayor Mays. On September 23rd, the Board of QLife met, and we received a financial report and some staff updates. We then went into executive session and then returned to regular session adjourned without any further discussion or action. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Counsel McGlaughlin.
I attended the urban renewal meeting, and I'll forward that to Counsel Richardson to report. Otherwise, I have no report.
Thank you. Counsel Richardson.
Mr. Mayor, in the interest of time, I'll just keep it as brief as possible. I've had a two or three conversations with constituents this last couple of weeks on various issues, and have been trying to address them through staff as appropriate. I did attend the urban renewal meeting with others. And again, in the interest of just really getting on to the main business, let's say the, perhaps the biggest couple of points people might be interested in from urban renewals, that the First Street project is moving along. It's, it's obviously been a long time coming, but it's, it's making good progress. I don't know that we have a specific date for when the thing will go to construction. I apologize, I should have that in mind, but I don't know that we actually stated that. The other item, their urban renewal, is that we're going to be having a sort of strategic planning session or process, I should say, this fall, to decide how to spend our last few years and nine or $10 million in urban renewal funds. So we'll be looking at various projects and prioritizing those a bit. So if people have an interest in, in anything along those lines, paying attention this fall would be probably a, a good idea. Let's, let's wrap it up there, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Item nine is the consent agenda. Items of a routine and non-controversial nature are placed on the consent agenda to allow the city council to spend its time and energy on the important items and issues. Any counselor may request an item be pulled from the consent agenda and be considered separately. Items pulled from the consent agenda will be placed on the agenda at the end of the action items section. There was only one item on the consent agenda, and that is the approval of the September 13th regular city council minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mayor Mays, I move we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Counsel Randall and seconded by Counselor Long to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye or raise your hand. One, two, three.
McGlaughlin, aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Item 10, Authorization to Reimburse Clickatatt County for the Installation of an Aviation Fuel Tank System at the Airport. And I know this will be either our Finance Director, Ms. Wilson, or our Airport Manager, Mr. Renard. So which is it? That will be presenting the staff report?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of Council. I'll be presenting the staff report this evening. Jeff Renard, the Airport Manager, is here for any follow-up questions after the meeting or after the report. And the staff report is for the Authorization to Play Clickatatt County for the Installation of the Aviation Fuel Tank System at the airport. And back in April of 2020, Clickatatt County purchased the, the bulk fuel farm for the airport with the approval from the Airport Board. The, the fuel farm covered the fuel tanks, the rigging services, the placement of the tanks in the airport, and fuel tank concrete pads. The original cost was $217,775. The city in the Clickatatt County split the cost between both entities. Last fiscal year, the city paid a partial payment of $50,000, and we put in the budget for this fiscal year to pay the remaining portion of $58,887.82. And also, in July of this year, the Airport Board approved the additional upgrades for the fuel farm to complete and convert the additional fuel tank to the new system. This project is to upgrade it to a fire code of ATA 103, and this will make the system US compliant. And this will make the system US compliant for military and commercial aircraft, aircraft to fly into the airport. And the cost is one oh nine seven six eight. And this project is included in the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year budget, but it's budgeted for eighty thousand dollars. But with a couple of extra projects that the airport does not plan to do this year with the security fencing and the drainage ditch, they feel that they have adequate funds in the capital projects line item to be able to cover this expense. So this evening, we're asking to approve those invoices to be paid through Clickatatt County. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions from Ms. Wilson or from Mr. Renard? Mr. Renard, I trust you have nothing more to, that you wanted to add to this?
Oh, thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay, all those looking for a motion?
Mayor Mays, I can make that motion. I move to authorize the payment of the Clickatatt County invoice in the amount of fifty-eight thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars and eighty-two cents. And move to authorize the payment to Cook attack county for the upgrade to bulk fuel farm for the jet A conversion in the amount of one hundred nine thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars and thirty-three cents.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Counselor McLaughlin and seconded by Counselor Randall to authorize the payment to the Clickatatt County and authorize the payment to them for the upgrade to the bulk fuel farm for the Jet A conversion. Any discussion, any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. Thank you all very much. Thank you, Ms. Wilson, Mr. Renard. Item eleven on the agenda is a discussion of a potential development agreement with Design LLC related to utilities. I have a few opening remarks before I turn it over to our Director of Public Works. I want to stress that this is a discussion item. No vote will be taken tonight. Our Director of Public Works. Our Director of Public Works will explain what he and his staff have negotiated between the city of the Dells and Design LLC or Google to provide that company with water and sewer service and answer questions from the city council and the public. I like to make a distinction between this agreement and the Strategic Investment Program or SIP agreement that was the subject of several public meetings back in March. The SIP agreement addressed the financial part of our agreement with Google. That agreement, while discussed at several public meetings five months ago, is a separate agreement from what we are going to be discussing tonight, which is water and sewer infrastructure. We expect both agreements, the SIP agreement and the water agreement, to be back at the city, on the city council agenda a month from now. Now, as usual, start, things will start off with the staff report by Mr. Anderson. And then we'll get the questions and comments from the city council. And after that has been exhausted, we will now move to questions from the audience. And I would just ask that if you do ask a question, please don't ask a question that's already been asked and already been answered. After that, we will go back to the city council for any final comments and questions. I want to stress again that the design, you'll hear Mr. Anderson refer to Design Inc. a lot. Okay? That is Google, just so there's no misunderstanding. So he will present the staff report and because of the importance of this issue and because of the key role that Mr. Anderson makes, takes place in, in this process, I've asked him to review his qualifications and his experience with water and sewer systems. So with that, I'll turn that over to Mr. David Anderson, our Director of Public Works, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of council. As, as the mayor mentioned, the issue tonight is the, a potential development agreement with Design LLC related to utilities, water and sewer utilities for future potential development. I have worked for the city for over thirty-three years. I managed the wastewater treatment plant and the Dallas Municipal Watershed for about fifteen years before becoming the Public Works Director for the last fourteen and a half years. I've been involved with the city's water supply planning and managed the city's water rights for over twenty years. And in that time, I've been involved in defending the city's existing water rights when they've been challenged, applying for and obtaining new rights to meet future needs and consolidating and extending existing water rights to maintain operational flexibility for the city. I was actually the, the lead on the team that negotiated the last agreement with Design LLC, which was adopted in two thousand fifteen. With me from the city on the negotiating team was Eric Hansen, the Public Works Assistant Director and Dale McCabe, the city engineer, who were also involved in the discussions around utility needs for new potential development. With that, Design LLC is pursuing the potential opportunity to construct a new data center in the Dells on the old aluminum smelter site. We've been engaged with design, and when I say we, I'm talking about the city team, to identify the utility needs for potential development and create a plan to provide those needs while not compromising the interests of other existing or future city utility customers. In support of those and in an effort to make technically sound decisions, a number of reports were completed to guide our decisions. We'll be talking about those reports in some detail. Those reports provide a summary of the efforts completed to date and present the concepts for a potential development agreement for consideration at a future city council meeting. Already mentioned that the city had previously entered into another development agreement with Design in two thousand fifteen related to their, the last facility they constructed in town. In the consideration of a new data center, just like any other industrial development, requires an understanding of utility needs and the city's capacity to meet those needs. And it's been the practice and the policy of the city to require new developments to, at the development's expense, provide the utility systems needed to serve the development. Historically, this has included such requirements as utility main extensions or pump stations, sewer pump stations. Because the city's water master plan was over twenty years or is, or twenty-year master plan is fifteen years old and hadn't anticipated this particular type of development. We conduct, three different studies were conducted by independent consultants. The first was a study completed by GSI Water Solutions entitled, The Water Supply Analysis for Buildable Lands Assessment in the Three Ten Zone. TSI is a firm with the, which the city is quite familiar. We've employed them ourselves for the last twenty years or so on issues related to our water rights and water supplies. The study evaluated all the city's water sources and rights to determine the amount of water available to support the existing and future developments compared to the projected demands of all the development that likely occur in that three-ten service zone. The three-ten service zone, I should mention, is a service zone. It's our largest service zone. It serves the downtown area. All the commercial businesses there, all the area along West Sixth Street and the port industrial area. This study identified that if all the potential development occurred within the three-ten zone, that is, all the vacant lands developed and the rest of the city within the urban growth area continued to develop to its full capacity, additional water supplies would be needed to meet that additional growth. And the report is, provided a strategy to meet those demands. The numbers, the report concluded that the city's current water system capacity is about nine point nine million gallons per day, per day on a sustained average day basis. And it's projected that if everything that all the properties are available to be developed, do develop, that future demand could be seventeen point five million gallons per day. Therefore, it's apparent that the city will need additional water supplies to meet those future demands. The report identified a multi-pronged approach to meeting those future demands. And the first prong is for the city to develop all of its existing groundwater sources, groundwater rights. Well, the Dells is located in a state designated critical groundwater area, which means we can't get any new water rights to the Dells groundwater aquifer, groundwater reservoir aquifer. We do have about five million gallons of undeveloped water rights and those could be developed. The second prong would be the acquisition of water rights from the old northwest aluminum wells that are located on or near the smelter site. And I think at this point, I'd like to deviate just a little bit from the written report and provide a little bit more detail about those water rights. There's, I think there's a lot of perhaps confusion about what's proposed and what those water rights are and what's proposed. The first thing I'd like to mention is that the water rights that are proposed to be included in, in a potential development agreement are existing groundwater rights associated with existing wells which Design owns and which they acquired from the aluminum plant. These are not new rights. These are not rights that the city owns and would be allocating to Design. The rights that Design currently owns and would be tran- possibly transferring to the city. Without this agreement, Design or any other industry or private industry, industry could use those wells as they wanted, just as the aluminum plant previously did. However, with an agreement, that those rights can be managed within the city's wider portfolio of water sources to optimize supplies for the city customers. The second point I think is worth mentioning is that the capacity of the aquifer was analyzed and identified in the report completed by GSI. And this information is also available on other public sources from Oregon Water Resources Department and USGS. The sustainable annual yield, and that's the amount of the capacity of the aquifer, the amount of water that can be drawn out of it on an annual basis without causing a decline is about fifty-five hundred acre feet per year or just under eighteen hundred million gallons, one point eight billion gallons per year. Currently, only eighteen hundred acre feet of the fifty-five hundred is being used, which leaves the capacity, a sustainable capacity of three thousand seven hundred acre feet. The requests for water that are just proposed in the development are well below these capacity limits. The third prong that would be of meeting the future needs would be the implementation of an aquifer storage and recovery or ASR program. ASR is a technology where we take treated water from our wastewater treatment plant, send it to town and pump it down the well for storage in the aquifer. We'd basically be using the aquifer just like we, a reservoir as we use Crow Creek Dam without having to build a, build a dam. It is a proven technology used by a number of other municipalities. And it also has the benefit that it provides value to the aquifer because Oregon State regulations require that only ninety percent of the water that is pumped into a aquifer can be recovered. So the aquifer always retains at least ten percent of the new water that's pumped down to it, providing a long-term benefit to the, to the aquifer. The GSI reported identified some other longer-term opportunities for future expansion of the city's water supply. Included the expansion of the wastewater treatment plant, which was already a project identified in the city's water master plan and implementation of a, another type of aquifer recharge firm called Aquer Recharge, which is slightly different than aquifer storage and recovery, but also provides additional water for the, for the aquifer. The second report that was done, I'm sorry, I should have showed that. The first one was the GSI report for the demands for the, the three-ten zone. The second report that was done was done by a engineering firm called RH Two Engineering, which is an established engineering firm in the Pacific Northwest with expertise in municipal water and wastewater system planning. This analysis focused on the infrastructure that would be needed to supply development within the three-ten zone at its ultimate buildup. Since most of the anticipated new development would occur on the port, the report focused on utility improvements and infrastructure improvements in that area. And the major improvements that were identified included some new port water mains, new above-ground finished water reservoirs, new wells in the port area, a booster station. And the wells in the booster pump station would be equipped with backup emergency power systems, which is something much of the city's existing water system does not have. The third report that was completed was conducted by a firm called Mall Foster and Alonge. This report looked at an evaluation of the groundwater quality and the risks that might exist to a water well located out in the port area. The reason, port concluded that the, all the new wells were recommended to be constructed on board with the tap into the same aquifer as the city's three existing wells. And that the top of the aquifer is nearly three hundred feet below ground with mostly impervious basalt above it. All the sampling conducted since the nineteen eighties concerns that any contamination from previous industrial uses is in the shallower aquifers and does not extend down to the aquifer, which is proposed for development and which has currently been used by the city. Moving on to the terms of a potential development agreement. I think it's important to understand that the case for information related to amount of water and waste or local discharge by Designs local facilities is not, won't be presented in this, in this discussion. But a development agreement would include a commitment by the city to provide specified water and sanitary sewer capacities for use by the design. And those quantities will be redacted in any publicly available versions. The potential development agreement would include conditions that Design would provide for the design permitting and construction of eight utility-related projects to the city standards and for those improvements to be accepted by, for final ownership and operation by the city as part of its water and sewer utilities. The eight constructed projects are, one, water main looping to connect the newly constructed eighteen-inch water main in the port to an older twelve-inch diameter main in the port. This project will improve the efficiency of water delivery to many customers in the port area that are located south of Chana with Creek. Second project is the construction of a new groundwater well with an approximate capacity of eighteen hundred gallons per minute and backup power. Third project would be construction of a new ASR compatible or aquifer storage and recovery capable well with a capacity of about eighteen hundred gallons per minute and backup power. Next project was the construction of a new above-ground storage reservoir on the port to serve the entire three-ten service zone. Fourth is a construction, or excuse me, the fifth is a construction of a new water booster pump station to deliver water from the new reservoir to the three-ten zone under the proper pressures. The next project was the construction of a sanitary sewer pump station to serve the design facility and adjacent industrial customers. Next project was the construction of a new sanitary force main, sanitary sewer force main from the pump station under the UP railroad tracks to the newly constructed gravity sewer line in West Second Street. And the last construction project was provision of a shared utility access corridor.
Does this go wrong? My next honor, I think this is going to start from here. It's as good as anything.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. There's a Linda. Thank you very much. Go ahead.
The total estimated value of these projects is around twenty-eight and a half million dollars. In addition to the constructed project, it's proposed that Design would provide the city certificated water rights for a total of about three point eight million gallons per day. These are the water rights that I previously mentioned that are already owned by Design. They are private water rights that could be transferred to city ownership and for the city to utilize in its broader water management, water supply management program. The water rights are sufficient to cover about two-thirds of the capacity of the two new wells that were mentioned. And the city would be able to use a little over a million gallons of its currently unused five million gallons of water, groundwater rights to fulfill utilization of the two new wells. It's important that the, the quantities of each, the water right and the production capacity of the wells are both greater than the amount of water requested by Design for the new development. The city would be receiving a net increase in both water rights and water production capacity. Under a potential agreement. There are also commitments for the city. Under a potential agreement. And one is to implement and offer storage and recovery monitoring program. And this is a. A requirement to be able to move forward with the developing and implementing an ASR program. And the city's actually already begun work on this project. The second commitment would be to accept the eight. Projects constructed by design for city ownership and operation. Once they're completed to city standards. There would be a commitment for the city to update its water master plan. Within twelve months of the agreement. The city's existing water master plan is, as I mentioned, fifteen years old and overdue for an update. Anyway, we already had this included in our budget and planned to do it regardless of whether there's an agreement. Related to this development or not. The city recently completed what was called was a federal required. Risk and resiliency assessment of our water system. The information from the risk and resiliency assessment will be incorporated into an updated water master plan and the city will. Strive to fund deficiencies or vulnerabilities. Projects that address deficiencies or vulnerabilities in the city's water system over time, which is already the the goal and requirements of. The federal requirement to do these risk and resiliency assessments. The city would credit utility or infrastructure improvements with capacity. Excess capacity that can be used by others there. Those the value of those improvements are credited against their SDCs. Under the agreement, the city would agree not to discriminate against design and assessing the fees, rates or other charges. Design currently pays and would continue to pay the same water and sewer rates as every other commercial industrial customer inside the city. The city would undertake a water utility rate study, which is a normal. Function, a normal element of doing a water master plan update. So. We were planning to do that anyway, to be sure there's equity amongst our various water customer classes. The city would seek to supply recharge water to the new SAR ASR will on the port is feasible. Basically means we would still try to use our ASR program as it comes online. City would use the same temperature modeling in the issuance of an industrial discharge permit. For the new development as was done with the existing development and it's also done with other industrial. Dischargers in the city. We'd consider a memorandum of understanding with design regarding water supply scenarios for the three ten zone, basically trying to optimize. How to best provide water balancing the various sources available to us to the water that's being supplied to the three ten zone, which is our industrial and commercial customers. And lastly, the city would cooperate work with design to see if I'm sorry, would work with design if there are new rules related to temperature. For wastewater discharge to the Columbia. As I mentioned before, nearly all of these commitments were things the city was already undertaking. For a plan to begin undertaking soon. With that, at this meeting, staff is seeking direction from the council related to a potential development agreement. And if changes in the concepts outlined. Are desired, they could be forwarded to design for consideration. With the council support, a draft development agreement could be brought back for the council to consider approving through adoption of a special ordinance at a future meeting. With that, I would entertain questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Anderson. I think I'm guessing that everyone, every member of the city council will. Have questions and I see Council Richardson raising his hand already. So. Why don't I call in Council Richardson? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Director Anderson, or if I can just. Call you Dave for tonight. Thank you for summarizing these reports for us and the outline of the proposed agreement. It's obvious a lot of work has gone into this. And Mr. Mayor, I want to say I know a number of people voiced concerns. Sent me email. About expanded Google operations impact on our water supply. And you know that I share those concerns. Water is just absolutely critical to our community. As I've said to you. Mr. Mayor and probably to others. We are, the city is an oasis on the edge of a big desert and the only reason we're able to thrive here is because of our water supply. So I do have a few questions. If I may, for Director Anderson. Dave. Our water system capacity. If I understand that the reports correctly is currently about ten million gallons a day. Do we come close to using our max capacity now on, say, a hot day in the summertime?
Our max day demand right now is about nine million gallons.
Okay, thank you. If we continue to grow in population, would we need to expand our system significantly if Google? Weren't interested in adding data centers?
Yes, yeah, we would. I mean, we already had plans I've mentioned in the existing master plan to. Expand the capacity of the water treatment plant. There's been a project for which we've obtained water rights. That included the future increase of the capacity of Crow Creek Dam. I think a lot of that storage, that's a storage project which is intended to. Significantly improve the city's. Resiliency to climate change, adding more storage opportunities. But a lot of that projected storage is has the potential to be deferred significantly with the implementation of a offer storage and recovery project. We'd be basically doing the same storage of surface water during the wet months in the ground instead of in an above ground reservoir. So those were. Projects that were already in the queue for us to meet the. Future and we also have the undeveloped groundwater rights that were. On our list for development to meet future. Future demands.
Thank you. As you recall. Myself and Mayor Mays came and talked with you last month. To take a look at reports and numbers and such and voice some concerns. At that point, you gave me some numbers. About or rather comparing Crow Creek. Reservoir to the ASR. And pop quiz time. If I recall right, the Crow Creek reservoir is. About two hundred and fifty million gallons and the ASR system here is four or five times that. Is that correct?
The total. Capacity, we have what's called a limited license, which allows us to begin the steps of implementing an ASR program. The capacity of Crow Creek reservoir is close to hundred sixty seven million gallons. The first ASR well is licensed and planned to be able to store up to about two hundred forty four million gallons. So well, one almost matches Crow Creek reservoir. The ASR limited license that we have anticipates a plan for ultimate development of up to twelve wells. With a total capacity of about one point two billion gallons of storage.
Billion with a B?
B, yeah, so twelve hundred million.
Thank you.
Two hundred and sixty seven million for Crow Creek reservoir. That's I do need to emphasize that's. That's the upper limit. That's the outer edge. That's the optimal. If everything worked great, but that's what we are licensed to be able to try to develop toward.
Okay, thank you. There's a seventeen and a half million gallon demand or capacity, I guess. That the report. Suggest we will need. Correct me or. Help me make sure I've got this right. Seventeen and a half million gallon per day demand. Is that a full urban growth area build out or is that it? So that's if everything, every commercial lot, every industrial lot, every residential lot in the urban growth boundary were. Were full and had the faucets on, we would need seventeen and a half million gallons.
That's correct. On the peak, on the peak day, yes.
On a peak day, right. And currently our capacity is about ten and the proposed agreement would see. Get us an expansion of three point nine in water rights from Google and another about one point three. Activating our own existing water rights through, I think, a second well, which put it in round numbers, we go from about ten million gallons per day capacity now to about fifteen. Okay. In 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 round numbers, correct. Thank you. Is that is that a fair understanding?
That is a fair understanding and I would. Just add to that or reinforce the fact that of that fifteen or the the new five. The new five is more than design would be requesting for their new development. So there's a net increase that the city receives. A net benefit moving towards the. The supply needs for the rest of the community.
Yeah, Roger that. So we've been sort of circling this, but I think the question at the heart of. Of what's on a lot of people's minds, definitely on my mind is is this, how confident are you? With your years of experience in in town and in our water system that we can expand our system. And deliver water to Google and to ourselves without. Affecting other customers, without breaking something, without turning somebody off.
I think it's really helpful for us to understand. What that annual sustainable yield of the offer is because that's going to be a key piece. And knowing that that's the fifty five hundred acre feet per year. Knowing that with this development, we're well below or this proposed development, we would be well below that. The other and then identifying the other prongs, as I referred to them before, is of. Source development. I'm confident that the city can meet those future demand. And again, this is assuming everything that's available in terms of land. Builds out to its full capacity. And then meeting that meeting that peak day. Without even the benefit of storage. Can I answer your question, Counselor?
Yes, thank you. In some, you know, the the numbers are, there's a lot of numbers and some of the numbers are awfully big. And yet it does. The deal looks a little. Pleasantly beneficial to us. Looks like that we come ahead by expanding our community capacity. To meet Google's demand, but also to meet. The greater communities needs now and in the future. And. Is that is that your reading of?
That is exactly my reading of it, yes. As I tried to allude to before, there's a net benefit to the city in terms of. Water rights to be acquired, water supplies to be acquired. Beyond what would be used by a potential new development on the smelter site as proposed.
I have one last comment, Mr. Mayor. We're looking to update our water master plan this year as Director Anderson. Said in his report and I'm I'm encouraged by that. My comment is that we absolutely must include a climate impact study as part of that. We cannot bank on our existing snowpack or rainfall pattern staying the same forever. So our water system definitely has to take into account not just growth. But also the fact that we're likely to see increasingly warm and erratic climate patterns. So I just want to make sure that. For my part, that's really clear that I support and I'm heartened to hear that we will be looking sort of taking a global look at our. Future needs and our system and do want to really encourage you, Dave, to make sure that we're. We're looking at the climate aspect as well.
So Council Richardson, I can actually address that now. We have drafted the request for proposals for the water master plan. We want to begin. The advertisement for that as soon as there's a decision whether to move forward with this agreement or not. And one of the tasks identified in the scope of work that for that plan update is a climate resiliency assessment. Along with a seismic resiliency assessment for the water system.
Thank you, Dave. Thanks for your report tonight and please thank your staff for their diligent work too.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor McLaughlin, do you have any, you have questions or comments?
No comments, but I have a few questions. I'm curious about the the smelter site. And what capacity that Google purchased with the purchase of that property. Those rights.
So the water rights that they. Own. That there are under consideration be transferred to the city are three point eight million gallons, three point eight eight million gallons per day of water. There were other water riots that they. Acquired from the aluminum plant and they have allocated some of those to other users. But those other uses have also already been accounted for when in the. Estimate of the current usage of eighteen hundred acre feet per year while below the fifty five hundred acre feet capacity for the offer.
All right, I have you reported that there are two separate plans for. The ASR and AR, I believe. One was taking surface water and storing it from the Wicks reservoir in the aquifer. The other one, the AR program, I didn't see a lot of information about that.
Yeah, so they are program is very, very similar. It's still is a program and a technology where we take. Treated surface water or would take treated surface water from the Wicks Water Treatment Plant and put it into the reservoir. It's administered differently in that it doesn't create its own separate bucket of water that we account for putting down and then pull out. Up to ninety percent of that same value with offer recharge. All you're doing is putting the water down there to help support. The offer itself and the use of other native groundwater rights. So it's just an accounting that's a little bit different. The. Technology and the infrastructure all looks the same.
I have. Another question on the water in the cooling process for cooling the storage equipment. Does it ever come in contact with any contaminants or is the water that's discharged basically non polluted? It's just clean water.
The water discharges is not potable water. The water wastewater that's discharged is subject to the terms of a industrial discharge permit as is any other industrial user in town. And any reuse of that. Requires some additional authorizations permitting and compliance with DEQ Oregon Department of Environmental Quality Regulations.
That answers my question. I only have. Two final. Comments that I noted was that you are confident the city can meet peak day without the need for storage. And that gives me confidence in moving ahead on this and the net benefit to our city because of this build out. Is there's a potential there. So I do appreciate all the information you provided and I have no further questions.
Thank you, Council Richardson. Council.
Thank you, Mayor Mays. Not really a question. I just kind of want to reemphasize what's been said already. I think maybe the bottom line is. We will have the capacity to meet the water and sewer utility needs of the proposed development. And the cost of construction will be funded by the developer if we follow the recommended strategies. Is that is that fair summation?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Also, just the numbers we're talking about here with a seventeen point five. Million gallons per day and it's kind of hard to conceptualize what that is. So just as. Little trivia here for some perspective. Seventeen point five million gallons per day. The average flow rate of the Columbia River right here in the Dells is. Eighty eight million gallons per minute. So that hopefully that helps people kind of visualize what what these amounts of water we're talking about. So that's all. Thank you.
Council Long.
Thank you, Mr. Mays. So. Mr. Anderson. So does it with the proposal here, is that relying on any groundwater naturally going into the offer? Or are you planning all of the needed? Water to go in through being pumped into the offer? Because doesn't it take a few years for groundwater to go down? water to go in through being pumped into the aquifer? Because doesn't it take a few years for groundwater to go down?
So with, I want to be sure I understand your question correctly. The ASR, of course, is an instantaneous, it's, it's an immediate addition to the aquifer. Yes, it's for natural recharge. It does take a number of years for the water to, from its natural recharge sources to get to the aquifer. But under that process, that's what's yielding the fifty-five hundred acre feet per year of capacity. This does anticipate using some of that capacity, the, of the fifty-five hundred acre feet that are currently available, about eighteen hundred are being used and the amount of water requested, even if we didn't do any aquifer storage and recovery, the amount of water requested is less than the remaining thirty-seven hundred acre feet per year on a sustainable basis.
Okay, great. And so we're talking about the memorandum of understanding for right now for what's being requested for the, I guess we say the new buildings, but I suppose it's, it's for all of whatever Google's water needs are, correct? I mean, it's not just limited to these two potential new buildings.
That's correct. It talks about water supplies for the entire three-ten zone.
Right. So Google also owns most of the industrial buildable land in that area. Correct? From our buildable land survey, that's probably more of an Alice question, sorry.
I'm reluctant to say most because I don't have those numbers off the top of my head.
Okay. So Director Cannon, I guess my question was kind of leading into the fact that, you know, we're talking about how much water Google needs for right now, but when we did the buildable industrial land survey, we talked about how Google owned quite a bit of the land that is considered buildable. And so I'm kind of trying, I guess my question is, I'm trying to figure out, is that going to impact us? How much might that request, how much? Is there a good chance that Google's going to be requesting additional water for those sites? Because it's quite a bit of land, correct?
Well, and maybe I can actually answer that regardless of how many acres are involved in, in the additional land because I, I think I understand the question, but the agreement that we're talking about tonight would only serve that, the smelter site property and the developments on that. If they wanted to develop other properties, they would have to come back to the city and negotiate another agreement and the city would be evaluating at that time, do we have the capacity to serve any more facilities?
Okay, so, so I just want to make sure because when I asked if it was for just the new sites or additional, so it's just for the, I guess we'll say the smelter site.
Just, yes, I'm sorry. If I misunderstood an earlier question, this proposed or potential agreement just addresses development on the smelter site.
Okay, and what's the length of the proposed MOU?
The MOU doesn't have any terms around it yet. The MOU is more around trying to, and, and there's no commitment. It just says the city will consider. And the MOU is around, well, are there some things that the city can reasonably and feasibly do to maximize the water quality? And when I say maximize the water quality, I'm talking about minimizing the mineral content of as much of the water going to the port as we can. Utilizing water from the water treatment plant to go to the port and the, and the full three-ten zone actually. And using ASR water to supply that zone, which again had, could, should have a lower mineral content than our native groundwater. Waters with a higher mineral content cause problems for actually several of our industrial customers. And to be able to try to stabilize that water quality through the sources we'd have available of water treatment plant, ASR water and native groundwater would be the, the focus of any MOU if one were initiated.
Okay. And I think that Counsel Richardson's question or actually statement that he would like an environmental study and discussion about the impacts of climate change, I would just second that because I do have concerns. We do all our planning here at the city in twenty-year increments, but I personally think we need, especially with water, we need to be thinking much farther out than that. And so my concern is just that we're, that we're looking a little too short-sighted.
And while I, I would send it, I'll clarify just a little bit. Our master plans, which is kind of like what we're going to build in the next twenty years, what are demands going to be in the next twenty years? Those are, those are the twenty-year plans. We also do longer-term planning. We've extended water rights out to twenty seventy-four before we have to develop them. We extended a Crow Creek Dam to, I think, twenty fifty-four. We're building a hundred-year pipeline for the replacement of the Dog River wooden pipeline. So I, I don't want to give the impression the only planning we do is on the twenty-year horizon. Those are just more detailed plans that have elements that are, you know, intended to be built within that period of time.
Okay, that's, that's really helpful because I've been asking questions for a while and it, no one had ever just answered that way, which is useful information. And then my final question for right now is that I've read that Google uses river water at other locations and I'm wondering if that was ever discussed as a possible source of water here?
It was, and it's because in part, I mean, you can't get new water rights on, on the Columbia. But the city has a water right on the Columbia and it's a very significant water right. But it's extremely difficult to develop that water. There's a, a federal requirement that there be no new net withdrawals on the Columbia River. And the only way that Columbia River Water can be utilized is for a, a user. In this case, if it would be the city because it's the city's water right, to find a way to do what they call bucket for bucket replacement. Put in the same amount or more water into the river upstream from where you're going to take it out. The only project that I know of that's been successful in doing that was a, a water project in Boardman, actually. And they went up into Washington on a, on a tributary river to the Columbia and paid for the relining of an irrigation district. The, the canals of an irrigation district and then made the argument that they had eliminated all this leakage from this old broken-up canal system. That water was then not being diverted for irrigation in Washington. It was staying in the river flowing down the Columbia and was available for Boardman to withdraw at, at their project. That's the only one I know of that's been success. I'm not saying it is the only one. It's the only one I know of that's been successful. So that's the real cha- that's one of the real challenges with utilizing our Columbia River water. We keep it valid. We've extended it and we, we've extended it way out into the future to give us opportunities, but it's, under current rules, it's a hard one to use.
Okay, thank you. I, I didn't understand that process, so that's really helpful. I appreciate it. That's all my questions for now.
Thank you, Counsel Long. Counselor Runyon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And first of all, I just want to thank my fellow counselors as usual. Very thorough, reading your material, gathering the questions from constituents out there and, and I appreciate that. Especially with the emphasis added on Counselor Richardson who took away my first five questions just being, and I always appreciate that too. So I tried to formulate from those, another question that was just that has kind of bubbled up in the emails and phone calls and things that we all receive, maybe in different volumes. Director Anderson, in, in your estimate, how, how important is it that if this agreement were to go forward, that we become, I guess, the owner of the water rights on the aluminum plant property and have full management capability of that water? What is, what does that really mean? How important is that to us? And can it be taken away?
So I'll answer the second part first or the last part first. Once successfully transferred to the city and converted from an industrial to municipal water right, it becomes very secure for the city. I think the only way, it, it wouldn't be taken away per se. If future events resulted in this aquifer starting to decline again, the use of that water could be curtailed. I mean, I'm just, that's what the critical groundwater area is all about. And I don't think I really touched on the history or the background of the critical groundwater area. Would that be helpful?
Yes.
Okay. Critical groundwater is designated by the state when an aquifer is in decline from over pumping. And the Dallas Critical Groundwater Area was doesn't, and this is the aquifer that we're talking about, the aquifer the city currently uses, the aquifer that the aluminum plant uses. And back in the day, the aquifer that a lot of agricultural irrigation occurred out of. And in the mid to late fifties, that aquifer was experiencing very steep declines. In nineteen fifty-nine, the state designated the Dallas Critical Groundwater Area, which meant that no new water rights could be obtained and there were some curtailments planned for the existing pumping that was occurring. I mentioned before that the capacity, the sustainable capacity of the aquifer has been determined to be fifty-five hundred acre feet up here, per year. Prior to the critical groundwater designation, it was being pumped at fifteen thousand acre feet per year. The solution to that was the creation of the Dallas Irrigation District. And that came online in nineteen sixty-six, nineteen sixty-seven, somewhere right in there. And it was in nineteen sixty-six that they began then enforcing the critical groundwater area with the relief from the pumping, agricultural pumping to, because of the success of the irrigation district, that pumping rate on the aquifer went from fifteen thousand acre feet per year down to fifty-five hundred acre feet per year and this clock for stabilized and recovered significantly. The next thing that happened was when the smelter plant shut down and the pumping dropped from fifty-five hundred acre feet per year to its current about eighteen hundred. And the aquifer recovered further again. So that's, that's kind of the history of what we've seen in the aquifer, who the players, you know, are, are, how the aquifer's been benefited over time. And, and how we find ourselves in the situation we are today with additional capacity to be able to, again, utilize.
Okay, very good. Well, I, I just want to add that between social media, emails and phone calls and whatnot, there's a lot of mis- misperceptions out there, misconceptions out there and I've encouraged each and every one and many of the folks I agreed with their concerns. But I encourage each and every one to pull up the packet. It's a very thorough report here and what I appreciated about your bringing that report and verbalizing it in the council meeting and I encourage folks to, to listen and we have seventy-three participants, it looks like, which is one of our, our bigger ones as far as participation on Zoom. The, the little additions that you have done as you did the report and, and brought that back to us and did some additions plus the questions tonight, I'm, I'm just very appreciative and for those that think that we don't have, and this has been kind of voiced out there, but, but we don't have the people with the wherewithal to handle this sort of thing and whatnot. I, I am just really appreciative of your expertise in the water area and, and your team. It's, I can't, I can't imagine too many communities having that pool of, of knowledge at hand and with the historical significance of it, of the number of years your team's been together. So I thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Runyon. And it just occurred to me, I don't think I answered your question about how important it was for us to, to get those rights or to acquire them. I think there's real value in the city acquiring those rights because otherwise they won't be managed as part of the larger, I think I referred to it as portfolios earlier and, and really being able to wield water in the, in the most efficient manner across all of our sources. Those rights are valid rights if they're utilized by a private entity, whoever that is. They would be, you know, done without the benefits of ASR and some other benefits that the city could provide as part of its broader program. So I, I think we have the opportunity to do the most good and manage those withdrawals within that sustainable annual yield so that we can have more, more wells within that program. I think you're muted.
You're muted, Rod.
Still muted.
Maybe it's telling me to go away. I just want to thank you. I, I assumed the first half of my answer, question was really answered by the second. And, and so I really appreciate that and what your team has done. So, Mr. Mayor, that's all I've got. I think we've pretty much covered almost every corner. If something new comes up, we still have more opportunity to take those questions and, and look at them in the coming weeks.
I did have a couple of either points or questions, Mr. Anderson. We're relying now, not only on, on your expertise, we're also relying on the expertise of three companies that did three separate studies for us. One was from the company GSI who did a supply and demand study. Correct me if I'm wrong on these. That's just what I'm taking out of your report. The second was from RH2 who did an, what, determine what infrastructure would be required to meet the demand. And the third was from Miles Foster, which was an evaluation of the groundwater supply that we have in the port area. You did hold those documents up so that we could see them, that they really exist, but there's no question that these documents are public documents, is there?
There's no question. Those, they are public documents, yes, and available upon request.
Okay, thank you. The other thing I want to just make sure that I understand and everyone else understands is that is that we're going to be making eight different improvements to our water si- water and sewer system. And I wasn't sure that the, the, I know your report mentioned this, but I want to make sure it's emphasized. We're getting a new eighteen-inch water line, a new groundwater, groundwater well with emergency backup power. Third is we're getting a new aquifer storage and recovery system that's compatible with our groundwater well. We're getting a new water storage reservoir. We're getting a new water pump station. We're getting a new sanitary sewer lift station. We're getting a new sanitary sewer force main and we're getting a new utility access corridor. Now, as I understand it, the total cost of all these improvements is twenty-eight million dollars. The thing that I want to make sure that is, is in your report that you, I think when you actually said this, it, I get, there was a glitch that I didn't really hear it. And what makes sure everybody understands is that this twenty-eight million dollars, the cost of these improvements that I just listed are all going to be paid for by design or Google. Is that, is that correct? Do I have that right?
That is correct.
Okay. And, and those additional improvements, the ones that I listed are, are going to serve to build in additional capacity for the rest of the city.
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else quickly on the city council, I want to see a quick question before we move to the audience? Because we will get, be getting back to the city council after we hear from them. Okay. If you have a question for Mr. Anderson regarding water and sewer or really regarding Google, I'm, I'm not, I'm presiding over the meeting, but I'll just let Dave handle each question directly. You don't have to go through me. Unless it's a question that's not related to what we've discussed on this particular item. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to go first that would like to ask questions regarding our, our potential agreement and arrangement with Google?
Well, I'll go first. Vance Ellis, can you all hear me?
Yes, could you please identify yourself and please give us your address?
First name Vance, B A N C E, last name Ellis, E L L E T T. Hello, Mr. Anderson. I haven't seen you for a while.
It's been a while. Hi Vance.
Howdy. Born in the Dalles, educated at Channel Whip and Matonka. OSU classes seventy-seven Civil Engineering. Basically, I've lived here my whole life. I also live outside the city limits. So first question I have is what elevation are these, what I'm going to call the Google pumps, are these Google pumps going to hang at?
So they are approximately four hundred and fifty feet deep from the port?
So mean sea level? Below mean sea level?
Yeah, about three hundred feet below mean sea level.
Minus three hundred mean sea level. My little irrigation well's about two and a half miles from that site. My pumps hang My pumps hanging at about two twenty or two fifty. Is there any protection built into this contemplated scenario to protect me if you start pulling those kind of volumes down there and my pump goes dry? I can't fight Google. I don't have the kind of dollars to get in the contest with them.
Right. Well, yes, I mean, water, water, you know, new water rights. These actually would still have the same priority data as the aluminum plant, which can interfere with senior water rights. And I have no idea Vance, what the, what the age of your water rights are. But I think the biggest assurance and, and the reason that I'm confident in this is because we're designing all of this and done all this analysis based on what it's the sustainable capacity of the aquifer is and staying well under that sustainable capacity. That with that, we, it's, we're not going to cause a drawdown. I don't know for sure Vance on the location years or so, so wells that are out on the Chinawithen area and, and a little bit further out of town to the south that are actually separated from the aquifer that we're drawing from here or would be, we draw with our existing wells. The, the Chinawithen fault serves as a boundary, a western boundary for the aquifer that we, the city draws from. And the, the aluminum plant wells draw from. And there's also the sink line. So there are, you know, facilities that are pretty close just distance wise, but aren't affected by the cities or the aluminum plant's use of the Dallas groundwater reservoir.
I, I went on Noah's site today and pulled the historic weather for the last thirty years. We've been below average or below normal rainfall twenty one of the last thirty one years. This year, as everybody knows, it's been painfully dry. How do you foresee hedging your bets or what kind of appreciation are you going to build into this plan? For if we continue to have year after year after year like the last four?
Well, and I think aquifer storage and recovery is one of our main tools for doing exactly that. That's where we're adding water to the aquifer. And at least ten percent of that water has to remain over time. The other piece that I think is beneficial is with the city owning that water rights. We'll have some control and be able to, like I said, optimize and, and the utilization of water from all of our sources rather than having an individual water right holder, having that as their only source and basically the opportunity to use it full bore.
Okay, Mr. Elliott, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi, Mr. Mayor. This is Dawn Rasmussen. I want to thank everybody for the presentation today, and I've had a, a previous conversation with Mr. Anderson. And so I think one thing, and I'm, I've obviously been a very concerned citizen about all this. I live out in the country and I'm on a well. And one of my biggest concerns is that after speaking to Mr. Anderson is that we're looking at a time where we are having, according to him, that that takes between two to nine years for groundwater to filter down into the aquifer. Where as Mr. Elliott said, we're, I'm glad he did some homework on the weather because that was my next question too. But it seems as though we are definitely trending to less rainfall or moisture, be it snow or rainfall. And when we start thinking about this in the context of a greater time period, if we don't have the rain and it doesn't come down and get filtered into the aquifer. I know we're talking about aquifer recharge, but even if we don't have the moisture in the winter time, which is our quote bank time. What happens when we start to get into a negative deficit situation? And we may have the water rights, but how, what kind of impact would it be? You know, I would assume that the citizens would come first, not Google. Should we get into a deficit situation and the aquifer start dropping? Is the city going to turn, turn off Google? And what kind of legal liability would that leave the city open to? I would hope that our citizens come first over Google, but there's a lot of questions with that liability there. And if we, the elephant in the room is climate change. So we're definitely on a downward trend as far as replenishment. And that could also impact us during the winter months. So I know I have a lot of questions there, but I think Mr. Elliott had done the research to show that we're what twenty one out of the last thirty years were going down in terms of moisture replenishment, not just for the aquifer, but during our winter months where we're supposed to be banking that water. And so if we have a large industrial user taking big gulps out of that, then we could potentially not be meeting that threshold. We have capacity, yes, that Google will be contributing to our community. But if you don't have anything to put in the pipeline, then where are you? So I, I just have a lot of questions there and I appreciate your understanding and patience with me. Thank you.
Mr. Anderson, before you add anything that you already have an answer for Ms. Rasmussen, Ms. Rasmussen, could you please, I missed, maybe you gave us your address and I just missed it. But for the record, could you give us your address?
Sure, thirteen thirty five Oak Hill Drive.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson, do you have anything to add?
The only thing, it'll just, I'll just reiterate again, these are existing water rights. And I think that the community and the, and the neighbors, you know, outside of town are best served by the city being able to, to dictate the use of those rights. And if there are challenges like that, we have a chance to address them and, and make up the the difference with a variety of other water sources. I, I do seriously understand concerns around climate change. We've been thinking about it for a long time. That's why we're exploring some of these things like aquifer storage and recovery and, you know, getting more efficient with our delivery systems and replacing pipes that leak and then some things like that. But without any type of an agreement or having those rights remain in private ownership, there really is a lot less opportunity for the community to have input into how those rights are used. So I think there's a real, I guess there's a good argument in my mind to be made for rolling those rights, the city acquiring those rights and, and having them become part of a larger toolbox for meeting those future water supply needs.
Okay, I believe Mr. Murray had his hand raised and then Mr. Nichols. So why don't we go with labeled Karen Murray here. Mr. Murray, did you have a question?
Yeah, this is Steve Murray. I live at twenty six forty five East Eleventh Street in the Dells. And Google is going to be using this water to cool their, their facilities. So when the water leaves their, their building, it's going to be significantly warmer than when it enters the building. After it leaves the building, where does the hot water go? And particularly where does the heat contained in that water go? Is it going to add thermal pollution to the Columbia River that's already under stress from being overheated? That the fish are struggling now. Is Google going to add to that stretch or that, that stress?
That's a great question. I think I, I mentioned earlier that design operates under a, an industrial discharge permit for its wastewater. The answer to where it goes, it goes to the city sewer system. Makes us with the rest of the city's wastewater, it's treated at the city's wastewater plant and it's discharged to the Columbia. One of the parameters that we is, are regulated within that permit is temperature. And there's been a pretty rigorous temperature model that we've developed because, because we have these types of facilities set down, right? We have these data centers and, and they do add temperature to the wastewater. So we use those models to identify a maximum temperature that can come from each facility. And to be sure that the city doesn't violate its wastewater discharge permit when, and the temperature elements around that. So that all gets addressed in their industrial discharge permit. They, and, and again, those are established to protect the city's interests and maintain compliance for the city's discharge permit to the Columbia.
And this one really doesn't have anything to do with water, but isn't the former Northwest Aluminum Site a superfund site now? And is Google going to clean up that? And where does that stuff go?
So the parcels that are associated with the superfund site are separate parcels and not owned by design. The ownership for those has been retained by Lockheed Martin. Those continue to be managed by Lockheed Martin. They have monitoring wells all around them to, actually monitoring and treatment wells for the real shallow groundwater associated with those sites. So there, those sites aren't part of disagreement or potential agreement other than we looked at whether there could be a potential impact from those uses on the water quality from new wells. And that was the third report that we did.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, Mr. Nichols and then Mr. Masher.
We can't hear you. Okay, thank you. Roger Nichols, sixteen seventeen Oregon Street. Thanks, Dave. I have a question about evaporation. And it looks to me, and I don't know what the percentage is, but if you're going to take water out of the reservoir and put it underground, you're going to reduce evaporation. Now, whether that's going to be equal to the ten percent you have to leave in the ground or not, I don't know which way that works. But also I know we've been losing a lot of water out of the Dog River Pipeline. And when we fix that, we should gain initial flow that we can use. Can you, any ideas on those numbers? Thank you.
I'll do Dog River first. I've spent a lot of time with it. Our estimates for the leakage on Dog River during the springtime when we have a full pipe is as much as a million gallons a day. Now, that's probably only occurs for a month and a half to two months a year. But that's a significant amount of water. And, and, you know, if we have a place to spring that across and eliminate the leakage, bring it across and store it for use later in the summer, that's what ASR could provide us. We already fill Crow Creek Reservoir. So we don't have, you know, more storage there that we could use by eliminating the leakage. But we could bring it across, utilize ASR, start in the aquifer. The other question about evaporation, I think that's also one of the benefits of ASR. We certainly experience evaporative losses in a surface water reservoir like Crow Creek. And I mentioned that, you know, future plans could allow the city to expand the capacity and store more water up there. But one of the benefits of ASR is we really don't have the evaporative loss. We're putting it underground where it's not exposed to atmosphere. And, and the evaporative loss is virtually non-existent. Any losses that occur in the aquifer itself as it leaks out or whatever, may not stay in its, in its bubble does not count towards a ten percent. It's, it's, you know, you put out, you put X amount, you meter it, you put X amount down the hole. You're allowed to pull ninety percent of X back out of the hole. So evaporative loss wouldn't be an issue with the, with the ten percent being to be retained in the aquifer. Did that make sense?
Absolutely. And, and thank you. And I really wanted to get that leaky jet that we've been knowing about that for forever and ever. And we're so glad, do we have a, how far we are in the construction, as long as I've got you on the line?
We're not in construction yet. We just finished twenty percent design and we hope to bid the project for construction next spring.
Super, thank you.
We'll go to Philip Masher and then Sarah.
Hi there, Philip Masher, nine one four West Fifteenth Street in the Dells. Thank you so much, Mr. Anderson, for such a thorough report. I, I've had a question running around my head during your report. And forgive me if I missed you giving this number. Did you actually tell us how much water Google is expecting to use?
I, I did not. And, and I think the mayor might have some information around that.
Yeah, we are, we are restricted from releasing that number because it is considered a trade secret and a subject of a non-disclosure agreement that was signed by city officials several years ago. If you want a better or more expansive answer than that, I'd have to turn it over to our city attorney. But that's, that, that's the answer there. Did you, did you have a follow-up question on that, Philip?
So there's no way for us to find out how much water Google is proposing to use?
Correct.
The thing that I can tell you, it's less than the amount of water rights being offered to the city. And less than the capacity of the two wells intended to be constructed, which is my comment about the city receiving a net increase in municipal supplies.
Thank you.
Did you have another question, Mr. Masher?
No, that was it. Thank you.
Okay, Sarah and then Matthew.
Hi, are you able to hear me?
Yes, very well.
Okay, perfect. Sarah McCanna, address is one one two West Thirteenth. So I even heard a comment made this evening about there being an issue with misinformation, you know, through social media and such. And so I just wanted to clarify to hear firsthand. If it's in fact true that, Mayor, if you have decided to not use a legal firm in this negotiation and have instead decided to handle this yourself with your counsel?
Well, the, the water agreement was negotiated by Mr. Anderson and his staff, which he introduced earlier today. I was involved in negotiations for the SIP agreement, this, the the, which is the financial part of this that was discussed at four public hearings about six months ago and will be discussed next month. That has not been passed yet by the city council. Does that answer your question?
Okay, so let me rephrase. So in this negotiation going forward with Google in terms of expansion and more water use, will the Dells have a professional legal firm handling our side of the negotiation?
We have a city attorney who's present tonight that is, that reviews all legal documents. And we, as far as the SIP agreement goes, we have him and also the county's attorney reviewing and participating in the discussions with Google.
And is our local attorney that you're using, are they specialized in cases with worldwide corporations such as Google?
No, well, I don't, I don't know that they are, but I did personally look into hiring a firm to represent our interest with Google. I'm talking about the SIP agreement now. And it is my personal opinion that the people that were negotiating that agreement, which included me and county commissioner and county and city staff were very capable of negotiating that agreement among the six or seven of us at the time. So again, I want to stress that was the, the strategic investment program, which handled, which was the financial part of this and not the water part of this.
Okay, so moving forward, so in case you're unaware, Google has, I mean, an entire team of top-notch lawyers that come from universities such as Yale, Harvard, Berkeley and many others. And they'll be negotiating Google's side. So we, we only have our local attorney, correct?
Well, I wouldn't use the word only.
Do we have, do we have more outside professional attorneys other than our local attorney?
No, we have our two, we have, are you talking about the SIP agreement?
I'm talking about the, the going forward negotiation with Google in their water use and expansion in that.
Okay, that part of it, which has been discussed tonight, was negotiated by our public work staff and reviewed by the city's attorney.
So no outside firms specializing in worldwide corporation negotiations, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, that answers my question. Thank you.
You're welcome. Matthew, Philip, did you have another question? Your hand's still up.
No, I don't.
No, I don't. Thank you.
Okay, so Matthew, go ahead.
Hello, this is Matthew Garrett. I live up on Cherry Heights. My question, I guess, is just looking into the future and wondering what pressures or incentives, I guess you could say, that we put on these large water users for conservation or reduction of water use. You know, if, if they're looking at using a certain amount, is, are there incentives or, or ways we look at incentivizing their reduction in, in usage?
I think the biggest incentive we've got is they're paying for every gallon to use at, at the same rate that everyone else is, which for a commercial or industrial user is three dollars and sixty-one cents for every thousand gallons they're using. You know, after five thousand gallons in a month. The the volume-based rate is about, is, is a very significant incentive for large water users. And, and that's going to continue, and that's why I wanted to emphasize early on, there are no water or sewer utility rate breaks for Design LLC or any of our other industrial customers. They pay the same rate as everyone else.
And, and then I guess on that, you believe that the, those rates are covering the, the maintenance and, and replacement costs of this system that we're going to acquire?
They have up to, to date, and I mentioned earlier with the update of the master plan, we'll be doing a, a rate and system development charge study. Once the master plan is updated and, and we, with that, with the rate study, we have a chance to look and make sure that our customer classes are paying their, their fair share, that one class of customers isn't subsidizing another one, for example. And that rates are where they need to be for operation and maintenance of the system long-term.
Yeah, that's all, all my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Carl Schwartz, did you have a question? And followed by Benjamin?
Thank you. I'm Bruce Schwartz. My address is thirty-four eighty-three Mile Road in the Dells. My question has to do, a couple of questions. One is Oregon Live did a piece today, and they said that in other states, Google told individuals or institutions what their water usage was. And I don't understand why, if other states can get that information and have it transparent, why cannot we get that information and have it more transparent? It seems pretty uncomfortable to be negotiating with somebody who can, can just claim trade secrets on all of their activities that's only known to, you know, a few of you, but not the rest of us. So that's one question. Why is it we can't get that information? And the second question has to do with the industrial discharge permit that apparently Mr. Anderson knows about in terms of temperatures of discharge. I presume that changes over the period of a year, but what are the parameters of the discharge permits for our industrial waste that goes into the Columbia River? Specifically, this summer, temperatures were reached critical values for the enderemus fish, the steelhead and and salmon were at critical temperature, and I'm concerned that significant discharge, and then we don't even know what the rate, how much that is, can be deleterious to those fish in coming years, particularly with more global warming. Could, so can Mr. Anderson or somebody address those two questions?
Mr. Anderson can address your second question, and I thought I'd already answered the first question, but if I miss something or needs further explanation, I'll turn it over to our city attorney, Jonathan Carr. So, Dave, why don't you answer the, the second question first?
Certainly. So the, the city has a temperature limit on the effluent from our wastewater treatment plant that goes to, to the Columbia. And that limit has a couple of different seasons associated with it and different temperatures, and, and I apologize, I'm not going to remember those numbers right off the top of my head. But they're set by the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality and intended to be protective of the very values that you just mentioned, salmon and, and other aquatic species. When an industry comes in and applies for an industrial discharge permit with the city, some of the information they have to provide is what's the maximum amount they're going to discharge to the river? We look at that as far as how much of a portion of the citywide waste stream there is, we can calculate then from various levels of temperature that might be proposed for, for their discharge, how much cooling occurs in, in our system and through dilution and being underground. And from that, and we've developed a fairly detailed model that helps us then set the limit for that industry. So based on the temperatures that they're talking about and the amount of flow that they're proposing to discharge, different industries get different limits that keep us within compliance for the city's discharge to the Columbia. And I wasn't able to give you a, a number that's, you know, seventy-two or, or whatever, but there's a process we have to go through. We haven't received the application yet, so I don't know what those volumes would be, and I don't know what their, what the temperature limit for a potential new facility would be.
Hey, Mr. Kepa, you want to answer that first question?
Thank you, Mayor Mays. Hi, good evening, Mr. Schwartz. To answer your question regarding why different states may have, well, Google's operations in different states may have resulted in the disclosure of material that we're keeping confidential here. It's a tough question. It's multifaceted, and so I'll give you some of the ideas that are in play, and I'm happy to answer any follow-up questions you may have. The first being that, well, the reason why the city is obligated to keep this information confidential is because the city entered into a non-disclosure agreement connected with this agreement and agreements like this back in two thousand thirteen. As for why Google wants to keep it confidential, they've said publicly with respect to data centers in other states, that they consider the information proprietary. And that were it to be made known to competitors, whether that is through public discourse like this or in any other avenue, their competitors may gain a competitive advantage by being able to reverse engineer some of the internal systems that they may be using inside their data centers. With respect to that Oregonian article that you referenced and some of the different disclosures that may have occurred in, in Texas and in South Carolina, I believe. It, it's my understanding that those were the result of legal battles where somebody leaked that information and that Google never actually publicly disclosed that information. Again, that's my understanding after reading that article that you read this afternoon. I read the same thing, but I follow the links. If you click them on the different cities that were involved there, you may see more context to your question, and you can sort of compare and contrast the differences between what happened there and what's happening now. Hopefully that answered your question a little bit. Another facet to consider is that considering different states are implicated there, none of those cities that had that disclosure were located in the state of Oregon, which has a unique public record system, and each and every state has a unique public record system for the most part. And the way that the Oregon law defines public records as they relate to trade secrets is certainly different than the way that the state of Texas, for example, does. And so under Oregon state law, what Google has submitted and has asked the city to keep in confidence is a valid trade secret, and so we are obligated to ensure its confidentiality. With the understanding that we, we, the city knows the numbers and we use those numbers to make informed decisions with respect to this agreement. Again, I'm happy to answer any follow-up questions you may have.
Thank you.
Did you have anything else, Mr. Schwartz?
No, I think that'll suffice. Thank you.
You're welcome. Benjamin? Go ahead, please. Could please state your name and your address for the record? Hello, Benjamin? Okay, I, I'm not sure what the problem is. We'll come back to him if he'd like to address Mr. Anderson or the city. Is there anyone else? I don't, I see Matthew's hand is raised, but I trust Matthew had your question answered. Bill Lennox, go ahead, please.
Hi, I'm Bill Lennox, one zero zero five Federal Street, the Dells, Oregon. And my question has more to do partly having to do with water use policy in the Dells, having to do with nonprofits and districts. But I also want to comment really quickly on this, the fact that maybe the Dells, with all respect, maybe needs to seek out appropriate counsel when they're dealing with an entity such as Google. It would be in their best interests, I think, in the long run, to seek out high level attorneys and professionals who can better deal with some of the issues that are confronting our city, having to do with working with an entity such as Google. Not to say that we're hick seeds, but it doesn't help to have some professionals on board to help maybe with our decision-making process. Having said that, I'll move on to this issue about the issue having to do with water and are some of our nonprofits in our community. You know, one of the frustrations as a volunteer in our community is that specifically I'm working with Parks and Rec and our lovely parks, and we are so frustrated by the fact that we're talking about an entity using our water, and yet we are unable to provide any support to our Parks and Rec and other entities who are helping make our community more viable and more interesting, and yet we are forcing them to sort of suffer our loss as a community. I mean, let's be real here, maybe we can do more in terms of supporting those entities if we can. Thank you.
Mr. Lennox, I'm just going to point out that the, through the SIP agreement, and this is, again, has been presented before and will be presented again next month, we, we went through the financial arrangements that had been negotiated with Google, and those, I don't have the numbers right here, but I, I can get them, but it's suffice to say that tens of millions of dollars will be coming into this community that I would suspect that every taxing body and maybe even some nonprofits will benefit from. Property taxes are a part of this agreement that Google will be paying, will have no will have no say in where those property taxes go. Each taxing district will get their fair share, depending on their tax rate. But there's, there's, there's other monies that have been negotiated with Google and will be, again, presented next month again that can be used for other purposes. So your point is well-taken. It's something I'm, I'm certainly sensitive toward. So I hope that's addressed your concern.
Mr. Mayor, could I please reply to that comment?
Sure.
I just don't think that people are aware that the city has shared transient rent tax revenue with the Parks and Recreation District for well over fifteen years at two percent collected. It was budgeted at nearly three hundred thousand dollars last year. And the whole purpose of that, when it was started, was for irrigation, and their irrigation bill runs around forty thousand dollars a year. So I just have to say to anyone who thinks that we don't support Parks and Recreation District, they get a lot of revenue from the city well beyond what it takes to irrigate the parks. Thank you.
Mr. Lennox, did you have anything else?
No, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Another call for Benjamin. Are you there?
Can you hear me?
Oh, there you are. Sure, go ahead. Please give us your name and address.
My name's Benjamin Dam. I live at ten fourteen East Fourteenth Street here in the Dells, and we just got a piece of property out on Pleasant Ridge and, and we're looking at, you know, punching in a well, and, and these things have, have everyone concerned. So I think that a lot of people are concerned just with the way that things typically go in these instances where it seems like the little guy, you know, doesn't, isn't heard and so on and so forth and, and all of that kind of thing. And I'm not saying that that's what's happening with, with, with this instance. I just, you know, everyone's got concerns. So one of my questions, I have three or four, was who paid for all of these reports that went over the aquifers and, and all of that? Did, did Google or Design, as we're, you know, their, their company, whatever collective, did they pay for part of this, or was this all on the, on the city, or how did that work?
So the design paid for all of them. The city was at the table and integral to the development of the, each of the three of the reports, providing input from, you know, of, of city, city needs and, and city historical data, challenging some of the initial, some of the initial analyses when we found them to be lacking. So we were definitely at the table and, and participated in the development of all three reports. But Design did foot the bill for the completion. They paid the contractors. And as I mentioned, I think earlier, two of the three consulting firms were ones that the city had worked with previously and, and was, was quite familiar with.
Sure, thank you. I, I, I think that that oftentimes raises a red flag for, for the layman, you know, myself included, where you, where you say, oh, looks like the person that wants something paid for the research that went into it. And of course, it's gonna, you know, the report is going to come back with a positive and all clear, and that seems to be something that happens quite frequently. I'm not saying that that's what happened here. I'm just saying that that's a concern that I'm sure that a lot of people will have with that.
I think in this case, the, the situation was the city was able to receive a product that it needed to make technically sound decisions. And we defined what, what that, what those analysis needed to be, what questions needed to be answered, and then we used those answers to develop alternatives that could be considered.
Certainly, certainly. So I have a couple of questions about the aquifer. So you, you mentioned that, that the channel with faults is kind of the boundary for the specific aquifer that's being drawn on. Is there any more of kind of a definitive breakdown of how the aquifers shake out in the area so that people that are outlying of the city limits can get an understanding of how they might be affected?
It's, it's stated in, in some of the state reports that the limits and the extent of the down, the Dells groundwater reservoir are, are not super well-understood to this, going to the south. You know, it's, it's pretty apparent from some of the information from some folks we've talked to that when the Dells groundwater reservoir has been increasing, if their personal well's been decreasing, likely a different aquifer. The, the depths that we're talking about help us to define some of that. But I, I, it's difficult for me to just show a line on a map to the, to the south that would clearly define the, the limits of the Dells groundwater aquifer.
Yeah, and I, I appreciate that answer, and I, I think that that's where a lot of the big concern lies for especially people that are or plan to try to move outside of the city limits where you are completely dependent upon that that water table. And trying, you know, because, because trying to understand how deep your well might be or how it might be affected over time, and it seems to me that, that what you've just said, notwithstanding all the knowledge that you have about what we've got going with Google and the water table, I, I totally understand all the information you've described about it not we should be fine, but if that drops and how that might affect aquifers, they're outliers. That's a big concern. So what if the aquifer does drop and it does affect people on? that's a big concern. So, what if the aquifer does drop and it does affect people on the outskirts? Does that, is there any recourse?
Well, I think there, there is. I mean, of course, there's Oregon Water Rights Law that, that gets utilized as kind of the, the last defense. If it drops, the states could intervene, given that we're in a critical groundwater area. You know, they will utilize their authorities to stabilize that drawdown. Again, I, I think the thing that gives me some comfort is the amount of unused capacity that we currently have in the Dells groundwater reservoir, and that everything we're talking about doing is less than those, significantly less than those capacities.
Is there any?
Yes, lastly, that, that, you know, the implementation of an ASR program would benefit the reservoir to the extent that ASR is implemented.
Yeah, yeah, and that sounds great. That's some new, new information that I wasn't even aware of. So, if is, is there anything on the dock? And I understand that the aquifer thing is, you know, from everything I've come to understand, it's kind of a black magic thing where you don't know where they start or where they end. Is there any way that we can quantify that better to better understand how this could affect people that aren't on the city water system, because there's a huge amount of the population that falls into that category and could be affected by this?
And this is for a, a new well that you are contemplating drilling? Is that, is that correct?
Well, sure, that, that, that's where I'm at. But I mean, there's plenty of people all around, all around the area that already have existing wells that, that, that fall into same parameters as far as.
Well, I mean, I think there's a certain amount of due diligence that a person can do, because while the exact limits of the Dells groundwater reservoir aren't known, you know, in terms of its horizontal extension, there is quite a bit of information on which aquifers exist in which areas and at what depths those occur. And there are certainly a number of other aquifers other than the Dells groundwater reservoir. So, I, I think there's certainly an opportunity to, to get some information around, you know, what an existing well might be drilled into versus, or, or what a new well might be anticipated to tap compared to this, this offer that we're talking about, which, you know, has some capacity for additional use and is, has the opportunity to be benefited over time with some ASR enhancement.
Understood. I think that that's all the questions I had. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I don't, I don't see any other hands raised. I only see about twenty people on my screen. Let's see, if I adjust it. So, if anybody else has a question, please speak up. Or raise your hand if I can see your, your rectangle. Anybody?
Mayor Mays, I just looked, and no one else has their hand up.
Oh, thank you, Counselor. Okay, let's go back to the city councils. Is there anybody on the city council that has any?
See Karen has.
Karen does.
Okay, Karen, I don't see. Go ahead, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, very good.
Okay, so here's a quick question. The ASR, so that's where the water is pumped into the aquifer? Is that from the well?
Correct. That's, that's correct.
Okay, so is the well water, that's, what's the clean, or how would I say? Is the well water polluted? Like, what's the water quality of the well water?
So, the, the water that is used to pump down into the aquifer is fully treated drinking water from the city's water treatment plant.
So, okay, so it'll be introducing whatever is left. I, I know our, our water, which is city water, is, is heavily chlorinated. And I, I believe you all add fluoride and things like that. So, that's going to then be introduced into the aquifer? Is that fair?
The, the level to which the city fluoridates its surface water supply is the same level as occurs naturally in the local groundwater. Point six, point seven milligram per liter, they're the same. That's why when we draw water out of the wells, we don't have to add fluoride to our well water to, to get it to the level. It's already at the same levels that we use for our drinking water. The chlorine, with, there's chlorine demand, putting it into a well, it's, it's dissipated very quickly when it combines with the high mineral content of the well water. Like I say, ASR is a technology that's, that's proven, utilized in a number of other communities successfully in Oregon right now. DEQ regulations all allow for the introduction of drinking water quality into native groundwater. And that, that's all addressed in the process that the city went through to get its limited license.
Okay, thank you.
I neglected to get your.
Oh, sorry. 1822 Cherry Heights Road, the Dells.
Thank you. How about your last name?
Mackey.
Could you spell that, please?
M-A-C-K-E-Y.
Okay, thanks very much. Mike Courtney? Mike Courtney, you got a question? Okay, we'll come back to Mike. Another Mike, Mike Ballinger. Did you have a question, Mike?
Yes, I did. Wanted to add my voice to the concerns about the level of legal expertise brought to bear, you know, from our, from the city's perspective. The consequences of, you know, this agreement brings me to my second question. If, God forbid, we, we were to have severe water restriction beyond the water restrictions we've experienced in the past, sometimes in the summertime. If we indeed got to the point where we had to portion our water between city users and industrial users, is there an existing legal protocol that governs how that happens? Who gets water and who doesn't in an extreme circumstance? Again, keeping in mind global warming and, and future effects. And if there is such a protocol, how does it work?
So, hi, Mike, this is Dave. Yes, we do have, the city has a water management conservation plan that was developed in, I believe, 2014 and submitted and approved by the state, and we just did our five-year benchmark, I think, in early 2020. Within that plan is a, an emergency curtailment plan that, you know, if the city finds itself in that type of situation, more likely due to an emergency loss of a source rather than, you know, just extended drought conditions. But it identifies four levels of curtailment where, you know, some of the very low priority uses are curtailed before higher priority uses. You mentioned the water restrictions that the city has, has historically had, and I think you'll remember, we haven't had those since, I believe, 1995 when we went on, installed residential water meters and had a, a consumptive element to our water rate. Before that, it was every year, right? It was every year that we had to go into levels of curtailment where we limited irrigation to specific hours and sometimes specific days. But our metering of our water system really moved us beyond that and, and dropped about thirty-five percent off of our peak day demand at that particular time. So, that's kind of the, the curtailment question, the, the, the legal document that exists for implementation of, you know, restrictions during supply emergencies is in our water management and conservation plan. Was there another part to your question?
Well, I was just, I guess to, to put it more directly, if it came down to it, Google being a, you know, global corporation providing, you know, this far-reaching resource, are they going to get water and, and we're not? In a, in an extreme situation?
In an extreme situation, yes. Outdoor, things like outdoor irrigation would be curtailed before uses at the hospital or uses at any of our industries. That's, that is the reality, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mike Courtney, are you there?
Yeah, I am, I think. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I just wanted to address the comments about the professionalism of your legal team. I've known the legal team since they formed their business, and every one of them comes from serious backgrounds. Principal Kristen Campbell, clerk for the Michigan Supreme Court, and they recruited Jonathan from San Francisco as, as a highly qualified, I think Stanford graduate. And these guys can compete with anybody in the country. So, you know, the idea that we don't have professionalism at the local level is crap. I've heard this throughout my whole career, which, from which I've retired, in dealing with insurance for public candidates and other folks in this area. Oh, we got to get somebody bigger from out of town, and that is total BS. And, you know, I, I don't like to speak that kind of language, but I'm so tired of hearing that we in the Dells cannot compete. Thank you.
Anybody has our comments?
Oh.
Is that Benjamin?
This is Benjamin. Hey, hey, just real quick, I had one more thing down here. So, when, who, and how is this, is this going to be determined?
This agreement will be before the city council at the second meeting in October, which I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. City Clerk, is October 25th. Along with the aforementioned strategic investment plan agreement, two agreements. Is that, is your question?
Yeah, understood. And ju- just to confirm, I mean, what, what, what are the variables that you're taking into account? I mean, obviously, all the reports, the concerns, these city council meetings, what, what's going to be the determining factor of how you guys rule on this?
Well, I think each city council member might want to answer that for themselves, but, and I don't mean to answer for them, but they're going to use their conscience and the information that's been provided to them and, and make up their own minds on how they would vote on both agreements.
Understood. Yeah. Thank you.
If any other council member would like to expand on that, please feel free. Or you can comment when the audience participation is finished. Okay. Any other public comments or questions? Okay, I'm going to move back to the city council at this point. Is there any city council member who has any closing comments or questions they'd like to ask before we adjourn?
Mayor Mays, I see one more hand up. James iPad.
James iPad. Go ahead, please.
So, the, the main thing I was wondering, is it possible to have a, a vote, a citywide vote on this? Let the people speak for, instead of you character, I mean, instead of you gentlemen speaking for us? I wonder if, if it shouldn't be put before the people of the Dells?
I, for one, would oppose that. I think you have duly elected the six of us to make decisions for the city councils, for the, for the city of the Dells. I think we've all done our homework, as evidenced by the questions that have been asked, and I can let each council members decide for themselves, but I would oppose such a, such a measure. Mr. Kara?
Thank you, Mr. Mays. The Charter of the City, which was enacted very recently in 2020, went to the popular vote. And in the popular vote, the city voted either to amend or to keep the powers of the city as vested entirely within the city council. I just wanted to indicate that the answer is no. This cannot go to referendum for the city. It's obligated to stay with the council as determined by the people of the city when they enacted the charter. Thank you.
And of course, if you don't like our decision, we do run for reelection, so some of us.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
This is Councilor Long.
Yeah.
I just would comment that I represent the people, and I would be welcome to any phone calls or emails for people that want to express how they feel.
Thank you. Any other counselor has, have any comments or questions before we adjourn? And I think echoing the words of Counselor Long, I think all of us are certainly open to any other comments or questions that we have in addition to what we've already received. So. Okay, last call. Okay, with that, this meeting is hereby adjourned, and once again, I'd like to emphasize that the strategic investment plan agreement and this water agreement that we've discussed tonight will be on the council agenda for Monday evening, October 25th. Thank you all very much for attending, and maybe we'll see you next month. Thank you.